Welcome to Monday, April 27th, City Council Workshop. This workshop is in accordance with the governor's outlines of having 10 or more people in a room, so we're going to do this remotely this evening. We're just here to talk about a couple of items that we have before us over the next several weeks. And it's good to get some input from the council, seeing that everyone will have a say in how we want to proceed. And I think it makes it fair to everyone to have their say. And rather than just, you know, just me or one person have the say in everything. I think we all have reasons we want to do things. And if we get them out on the table today, I think we should be all set. So, um, all right. The first item is the special council permit discussion during COVID-19. And Councilor Cox and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago. Well, she had asked to put this on a workshop. And we're here to discuss that and a couple of other items this evening. So, Councilor Cox, would you like to start off on your request to have this on the agenda this evening?
So, the request to originally have it on the agenda was so we could hear from the department heads that interact with this type of process. And so, you know, ZBA, Planning Board, Greg Catamatory, to get his feedback from the process to see if what we're going to do will end up in a lawsuit either way, those kind of things, like what the likelihood is of that happening. And unfortunately, because for whatever reason, and we all know the reason, they will not be joining us tonight.
Who's they? Sorry, who's they?
All the departments.
I had asked Greg Catamatory and Bill Samborn to join us this evening for our workshop.
Okay.
And tomorrow evening, I've asked Rick, and I've asked Rob Gullah, and I've asked Joe Perici, they're the chairs for their respective committees, to ask questions for tomorrow.
Thank you.
But today, we were just going to kind of run a couple of things by Bill and Greg. We received an email this afternoon from Jill Cahill, our Community Development Director. And she asked us to submit any questions for the administration through the community development. So if anybody has any questions surrounding these special council permit discussions during the COVID-19, please submit them to our Community Development Director. And Jill said she will have some answers for us by tomorrow evening, in enough time where we can review them too. But my purpose to have them on here tonight was to try to get a level ground, not only between the council, but between CONCOM, the Planning Board, and the ZBA. I know, I know, we're all up in the air on what we're trying to do. I know some of these boards and commissions are waiting for us to do what we are doing as a council so they can respond. But I thought it was a good start where we could get some input from some of the administration to answer some of our questions this evening. Then tomorrow evening, we could ask the chairs on what they want to do and how they feel moving forward. And then we could make our, we have a for-council vote on tomorrow's evening's agenda for the governors. It is the, we can, what is the, what is the law? I forget the actual law, the number he's put in. But we can ease our restrictions on special council permits and city council rules. But I think that if we have this discussion over the next two days, we have that council vote on tomorrow's agenda where we could either vote to enforce the law that Governor Baker has already put in place, or we can vote to ease that and go forward with our planning and development. So, if anybody has any questions, I recommend that we submit them to, through Jill, at Community Development, either to Greg or to Bill. And like I said, they would, they will have a...
And to be fair, it should be by noon, so they have time to work the answers and to do any research that should be done. I mean, the whole point of asking to do a workshop this evening was because I was extremely vocal about not wanting to move forward. You guys knew that from two weeks ago. And the very next day, I had three phone calls with people that are intimately involved with the process. And they, they made me see it from a different light in regards to what we have, the infrastructure that we have going right now, and people that are way more involved than any of us in the special city council permit process or in development, and that have been doing it a lot longer than us and can see the differences between our current process and the prior process. And, you know, a lot of them had some very valid reasons. So, I believe that we could find some common ground. And that was the request for the workshop is, I know it's a 50/50 shot that we get sued regardless, either by the opponents or the applicant. So, a lot of my first round of reasoning went because of the public input and how we are moving forward with these Zoom calls. And, you know, it just didn't seem fair to move forward with anything if we couldn't do it with the public input. But after doing some more research on my end, receiving those three phone calls, and, you know, I felt that it was fair to open it up for more discussion and to get the viewpoint of the city staff, which we'll end up getting tomorrow. But, I mean, it's just unfortunate that we couldn't make it happen for this workshop, so.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Well, first of all, it's not up to the city staff, okay? The city staff that's on the, whether it's CONCOM, whether it's zoning, whether it's P&amp;D, is liaison. They're there to help you. They're not there to advise you. They're not there to tell you what to do. The chair is the head that makes the decision. If Chip is on here, he'll help you explain it. Now, just because, there's going to be a lot of different meetings. There could be small meetings, big meetings, whatever's going to come forward. It's up to the chair to say, you know what, either whether it's zoning, CONCOM, P&amp;D, thinking that, you know, they can get this on, there's not going to be a big issue, there's not going to be that. And if you feel that, you know, like Val was saying, she can have the first part of the P&amp;D and have that and feel that they might not be able to get sufficient people in, or people might not, or they voice their opinion, saying, "I would like some more time," or they, they all can, someone from the public can say, "I do want a site visit." That's up to their option to also be able to do that. And then at that time, the chair of whatever subcommittee it may be can say, "Well, we're going to bring this forward, and we'll ask that it be continued." And then this way, it's opened and they can move forward. So, Chip, you're on there. When Chip explained how he wants this done, so I'm going to the meetings, and I have emails, and I'm going to ask fans to look forward. Every city and not town manager, because they have to have town meetings, are having difficulties with these meetings and what's happening and not happening. And the fact is, some did what you guys voted last time. Some are not having them, and they're saying, you know, "We can't." Well, the small ones, anything big, anything structural, anything that's going to be, you know, humongous or whatever, a big change to the neighborhood is going to have to have wait a little bit because that's going to be a permanent something that's going to change. Small things, "I'm adding a dish, and I'm adding a porch, you know, and that and this." It's totally different. But when there's big, larger things, you're turning out, let's say, a one, one, one structure into a 10 condos. I mean, that's going to affect, you know, the whole neighborhood for the rest of their lives. So, that, they ask, you know, "We're going to wait and do things." So it's really up to the chair. Chip, you want to weigh in on this?
First of all, hold on, one, one second. So, Balthia, no one's saying that we asked Planning Board or ZBA for advice. What I wanted to know is if they felt comfortable moving forward with their portions of stuff in this format. It's, it's an opinion, and that's all we were asking for. That's all I was asking.
But you're putting my staff in a predicament. That's what the whole thing. Because they are a paid position, and that's, and that's, and they get appointed by council. So, we had this discussion at the managers' meetings and how they felt and didn't feel. And so, you know, the question's because you're putting them in a predicament too, because the fact is...
How are we putting them in a predicament with asking their opinion?
Because you're asking them for their own personal opinion, how something should go. So, you're asking them to shoot out of the dog. Bill Samborn, you're having this unit, let's take expressos again, because it's already been done with. Bill, what do you think about this? Should we have it? Should we not have this meeting? So, you're putting them in a predicament because he is a hired position. It's not his call. It's the chair of the P&amp;D. It's the ward council. It's the people's. They're there to advise you, yes, it's legal to build this, no, he's going to ask to go in front of ZBA. Then you go in front of ZBA. They're just liaisons. They will help with any questions, but Chip will intervene. We have this meeting at the managers' meeting. It's really not up to them to say, you know, Greg or, or CONCOM or whatever, to say, "Well, what's your opinion on this?" Because then we have a lawsuit because a paid employee is already telling you what to do. So, Chip's going to intervene what he said, and he'll jump in. And you might ask questions. We can answer your questions. But there's a fact that for them to help on a workshop, none of them did. I asked everyone else too, on the mayors, the city council. It actually has jurisdiction as far as how they want to hold a subcommittee meeting. So, Chip, I'm going to shut up.
Steve, we might as well just end this conversation then, because, and we'll take it up at tomorrow night's meeting. Because if we're not allowed to ask how they feel that the meetings are going, I mean, even Rick Noonan and Joe Perici are here. Why is it so hard to get their opinion on how their piece is handling it?
So, that's, that's, that's kind of the reason I wanted some city staff here this evening.
But you do. You have the attorney who's telling you what each one can do. My staff can't tell you what to do, Steve.
No, I know that.
We're not asking them to tell us what to do. Thank you very much.
We were going to ask some questions. And, you know, if they didn't feel comfortable answering a question, they could have said, "Well, that's not up to me to decide."
But they just did that by sending you that email.
I, I know. I know. There's nothing we can do. They're not here, so there's nothing we can do about it. Tomorrow, we're going to have the chairs, and we're going to do this at full council to have this hashed out. I think, I think tonight's meeting with city staff would have made it easier for us tomorrow. It's going to be dragged out a lot longer for tomorrow evening than having some of this, some questions that Bill or Greg could have answered for us this evening. But we'll just, we'll just have to take it up tomorrow.
Can I, can I try to reframe this quick?
Thank you.
I, I think, I think the way to look at this is that the city council, like CONCOM, like Planning Board, like the ZBA, is an independent body. You guys have, and you know your business, you have applications for special permits that are going to come before you. And you know the process that you have to go through in order to vote on those special permits. The fundamental question, in my opinion, is, do you believe that you can do that remotely and adhering to the safety rules that govern what we do right now, given this coronavirus epidemic? You know, you know, the other boards, the ZBA, I was on with Planning Board, and it's, it's up to the chair and their workload and whether they believe the jobs that they have to do can get done by doing it remotely. So, I think that's maybe what you might want to think about is, you know, through this process where it starts, you know, council refers it down to Planning, Planning and Development, Val and the committee does their work, then it comes back up. Do you believe that through that process, and you really kind of, you know, the law doesn't allow you to deviate from the process. It just allows you to either postpone it or to continue to conduct meetings and public hearings remotely. Can you do that, your work, the city council's work, and still, you know, be safe? You know, to be blunt.
Thank you.
So, can we ask the chairs of, right now, we have Rick and Joe. Can you ask the chairs, so this way, when you do ask questions for Greg tomorrow, or whoever may, or Bill, they'll have, like you said, Councilor Cox before 12. So, Rick, you know, how's it going with you on the ZBA? You've been holding meetings. Everything's been going okay?
So, Planning Board...
Hold on, Rick, one second, please. Hold on, one second. So, I didn't realize I was on mute. So, tomorrow, we're going to have Rick and everybody up there at the full council. That's why I wanted those guys up there.
Well, it's a workshop now, Steve. Ask them to ask some questions so we can get it out. I can get it out to my staff. That's why I'm on here, to get it out to the staff, to see what, it's a workshop. We're not, it's not a homality. Right now, we're trying to get this so we get professional.
Yes, but it's a city council workshop, and you should let Steve finish his sentence, please.
So, but like I said, I, I, I wanted, I wanted, I was asked to get some community development this evening. So that's what I tried to do. Bill and Greg are, they're, have so much knowledge, more than, more than we will ever have. I mean, I have a little bit of building background. I know what John does. You know, I know Melissa's in a little bit of the trade. I don't know who else has any trade skills. So, for us to ask somebody that, that's their job, you know, with no knock on Joe and Rob and Rick, they're appointed too, and they have full-time jobs that they work at. But I thought that having Greg and Bill there this evening as paid staff would have helped us answer some of these questions. You know, that's, that's what they do for a living. And for them to answer some of our questions as professionals, I just think it would have helped a little bit. So, that being said, if, Rick, if you want to interject a little bit, feel free.
So, to Balthia's question, the Planning Board met on the 16th of April, the day after the no mask, no entry thing wouldn't, you know, enforce from the health department, local health department. And that night, we actually had a workshop special permit before us that is the only thing that we are the permit granting authority for. We had a discussion prior to taking up the public hearings. And it was, you know, not only the will of the board to move forward as business as usual, but we thought it was our responsibility to do so, frankly. And, you know, Chip joined us in that particular meeting. One of the issues that I brought up was consistency across the, you know, across the boards and commissions of the city, either we all do it or we all don't do it. You know, the interpretation from Chip, and certainly with the intent, was you leave it up to the chairs, right? And so, me as an appointed citizen serving on a planning board as chairman, I didn't see that my personal view really should have carried that meeting. And so, I opened it up to our board. We discussed it. You know, we go on site visits all the time. I usually miss the site visits because I work in the mornings and the afternoons. So people go to site business by themselves, right? I mean, I'm sure everybody in this meeting right now has been to the grocery store, right? You all have to wear masks to get into a grocery store. So, the, you know, things have certainly changed. And, you know, we didn't see any reason to interfere with the process.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Yeah, so I sent out an email a few weeks ago, and everybody, Rob, Joe, and Rick had received it and responded, which was great. And basically, the email said that the city council is weighing in on the, what we're doing, that these boards and commissions should be business as usual. So, thank you guys for keeping business as usual. We're going to take up our vote tomorrow, so I really don't want to discuss on too much what we're, what we're trying to do here. But if anybody has any questions for Rick or Joe, absolutely, feel free to. John, do you have something to say?
Yeah. Rick, when I'm reviewing this new legislature, it also says that the appeals period has been put off for 45 days after the state of emergency is lifted. How does that affect anything you are permitting or that's going through ZBA? And is the building permit being issued? If so, are we going to end up in a mess later with these appeals being taken up 45 days or up to 45 days after the state of emergency is lifted?
So, I would gladly defer that to our city solicitor.
My understanding is that, number one, you're correct, that the appeals period is told or stopped. And in situations like this, it's a build at your own risk situation. And that is up to the applicant. So, that's kind of the short answer to it.
Just to follow up on that, if you don't mind, Steve.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
What, do you see, like, our building departments issuing a building permit, and the statute says that it's unlimited right now until we know when the state of emergency is lifted. You say, "Build at your own risk," but we all know how litigation works. At some point afterwards, are these people going to come back and say, "I didn't understand, but the building inspector handed me a building permit. I just built a $250,000 addition on my house, and now I got to tear it down because the appeal got upheld."
So, two things. Number one, my understanding of the process is the building inspector issues a permit clearly conveying that this is an at-risk situation. Number two, just because they didn't understand it doesn't mean that, that that's an excuse or a defense. So, you know, they've got, most of these folks have lawyers. If they don't, they, you know, they probably should. But this is a unique situation and a unique environment, and it's even more reason to have a lawyer with you when you're going through this. But my, again, my understanding of the way the city does it is we're very clear that, you know, this is an at-risk situation because, you know, the appeals period's not going to kick in until this thing's over.
Okay, Joe, could we ask... Just to finish on that one line, Steve, if I can, with Chip. Chip, is that part of the statute, the "build at your own risk," or is that local policy?
So, why don't we let John get all his questions in, and then we'll move on to the next person? So, yeah, if you want to just keep asking your questions, John, go for it.
Well, it's just the same thing that I just want to get clarified.
It's in statute. You know, you can, you know, my understanding of the law is that, that an applicant receives a special permit application. The appeals period starts, and they're, they're more than welcome to, to, to start building. But again, they do so at their own risk. You know, I don't remember what section it is, but I remember reading it. So, that's in statute.
Okay, thanks, Chip.
Okay. Could we get Joe to weigh in here? I know we had Rick talk about the, so, is in.
How you doing, Joe?
Hello. Yeah, so the zoning board of appeals, we continue to meet. We met on April 9th via Zoom, and we heard seven hearings. A few were continued because there was still ongoing work to be done. Some were decided. We're meeting this Thursday night also by Zoom for another seven hearings. And so, even if we make decisions, we're not signing decisions because we don't have a method to do that. So, nothing's being filed at the registry of deeds. But what it's allowing us to do is prevent a huge backlog of cases that we would never be able to hear in when this is opened up in that quick period because they've all applied at a certain date. And historically, we have to give an answer by so many days. And if we don't, something is approved. So, we're, by having the hearings, we're clearing our dockers somewhat. We're going to, we average seven twice a month each time. But none of the, the decisions are getting written, and, but they're not getting signed by the board members. Now, that applicant can go to the building inspector by what this new law says and pull a permit, but again, at their own risk. Even if this wasn't going on, there were instances, depending on the type of permit, we have 90 or 110 days even to issue our decision. So, somebody waiting 45 more days to start their project, we could, we could have them wait that long on any application, even in a non-corona time. So, I think they just learned they have to wait, get the signatures, wait for the 20-day appeal period, and then file at the land court, and then they can pull their permit. But our hearings have seemed to go pretty well. The seven we have this Thursday, our members do site visits on their own. We never do them together because we don't want to be in a group and violate the open meeting. So, everyone's done their own visits. Most of the ones this week are pretty simple. We did have one that was a little more complicated last time, and I chose to leave the public hearing open and continue it into May just because it was, if it reached the point I felt where it was a little bit more than could be done via the screen, I used the discretion given to me in the legislation to continue. That's kind of where we're standing.
Thanks. All right. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, John. Is there anybody else that would have any questions? Jen?
Thank you so much, Joe. Just a quick one. How is the participation in the hearings? Is it lower or is it about the same? I just, I'm worried about how they're being noticed and how accessible they are to the public. Thank you.
So, obviously, the panelists, anyone that's representing an applicant is registered and is visible like you are. And then, as you see on the attendees up on the right, I have to keep an eye on that. And they have the ability to raise their hand and speak on either for or against, which we call for. Now, we take that time, and anyone on that grid, excuse me, would be able to be recognized and can speak if they go off topic or whatever. We have the right or the ability to turn them off. But we haven't had to do that. So I anticipate a neighbor can, who may want to speak in favor. Now, what a lot of people have reverted to is sending letters instead, which we're, we're adding into the, reading into the minutes. They're part of the record, and they're included. So, we've, we've tried to do it that way. But some of the same people that wrote letters then raised their hand and spoke also. So, seems to be okay. I mean, yeah, this technology may not be for everybody, and that would always be our concern. But if it was really, if there was a lot of people and it was really carrying on, I think I would just use the discretion to continue.
Steve? Counselor, do you see me?
Yeah, I'm on you. I said, Val, go ahead, Val.
Okay, great. Thanks. So, in the last two weeks, I've put a lot of more thought into this because we did have a rigorous conversation at the meeting two weeks ago. And the thing that keeps, I keep being reminded of is that May 4th is going to be coming, and I think we're going to be continuing that date, possibly a month, month and a half. I don't know. I don't quite want to speculate, but it's going to be a lot longer than May 4th. So, as I look at that right now, I just, I do have listened to both Rick and Joe and spoken to more people after the last meeting as well. I, I see a bottleneck that is going to begin to occur. We have, let's see, we have Wing Ashy is going to need a public hearing and a vote. We're going to have Atlantic Road. We're going to have Essex. We're going to have Folly Point, which is another height. And now we have Maplewood, an overlay that Joel Favazza is just referring to P&amp;D and Planning Board right now. So, there's just a lot of activity coming up right now. And so, what my thought continues to be is that rather than just hold off on everything, we could sequentially start to vet these, particularly now knowing that there's going to, it's going to be longer that we're going to be in a state of, of an emergency order. And the other thing that I spoke a little bit to Rick Noonan about on Friday, which was helpful conversation that I had with Rick, is that we keep talking about the site visit as being this site visit with like 40, 50 people because we remember expressos, we remember Fuller Street. They were really packed with a lot of people. And, and so, in thinking of that, and then saying that, you know, this, this social distancing matter could be part of our lives for a lot longer than we have ever anticipated. One of the things that we could do, just as a possibility, and if you read Appendix A Rule 25, Rules of Procedure... and if you read Appendix A Rule 25, Rules of Procedure, Action 1 is very simple. When a completed special counsel application, including a report and recommendation from the city staff review committee is received by city council, the council shall refer to P and D for their initial review, to make a date for a site visit, and then set a date for public hearing before the full city council. So those first two factors, including the date for a site visit, I look at the site visit as being something that we could think out of the box, and possibly ask the applicant to come up with a way that they could videotape the site, come back to us in P and D, and we could view on Zoom the site visit, and we could ask questions of the applicant right there. And every single person that would have been one of those 34 members of the public that we had at both Fuller Street and Expresso's, would have the same benefit of seeing that site visit on Zoom and submitting questions for us to ask. So the process would just be a little bit more, it's, it's a little bit out of the box. But to me, right now, because we don't know how long social distancing is going to be, I think we have to start thinking out of the box, and we have to balance being, you know, bringing forward these processes that show that we're fiscally responsible, but yet very concerned with COVID-19, and come up with suggestions of ways that we might be able to move forward. So we're not bottlenecked with seven, eight, however many of these are going to be in front of us after the emergency order is lifted, whenever that may be. So those are my comments and why I've thought more about it even since the last meeting, and I just wanted to, to share that with my fellow counselors. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Val. So I'm just going to say what I said a couple of weeks ago, too. We're all going to have to make this up, P and D, O and A, B and F. We're all going to have to make up meetings. So we're all going to have to have special meetings. And that being said, if we do get bottled up, we're going to have to schedule a meeting every week until we get caught up. I know it's going to be tough, but we're going to have to do what we have to do. We all have substitutes on standing committees, so we'll be able to substitute if somebody can't make a meeting. So that being said, Barry.
Yeah, just, again, what you've just said, and I think I remember John having mentioned, you know, before, and part of the reason that we did put things off is that we want to make sure that everyone gets to participate. I have an issue with what Val, and I appreciate Val's work in trying to figure this out, is the, how to maybe get things, something started, at least. I would be very reluctant to have an applicant present a Zoom presentation of the site visit. I would think that that could be interpreted, and I was, that site visit could be done and slanted in, you know, in, in favor of their application, and not, you know, not the way that we might want to, if we were going out on an individual site visit, we would be able to see things on our own. I would much rather, if, even if we're not going to do a large site visit altogether, I would much rather say, okay, let's have, you know, half a dozen different dates, and we can all go when we can go, and make personal observations and see, and ask the questions, versus being shown what's going on in a Zoom presentation. I would, I would, I'd be very reluctant to, to do that part, but I, you know, I appreciate Val's, you know, research in doing that. I'd be extremely reluctant to go on a site visit that was presented by the applicant.
All right. Anybody else? Melissa, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I wanted to, first of all, thanks, Joe Perici and Rick Noonan for being here as they are appointed by our city council, just as much as the city staff are. So I would like to thank them for being here and sharing their process and their opinion with us, and willingness to maybe not encourage us to move forward, but give me a level of comfort to vote in a positive manner to keep moving forward. So, I mean, that really means a lot to the process, and it, it definitely helps with my comfort. So, and I, it's not all about me, and it's about everybody else's comfort. So we appreciate your input into this. I also would like to know if, and I know, Counselor, you, you are saying, meaning Chip Peason, that you are saying that it's part of the statute anyway, is a risk to move forward. But I'd like to see even our body, when we're permitting something, but the ZBA and the Planning Board to also add an extra documentation saying that these are, it's a risk anyway, but it's a greater risk now, because these projects could be 100% complete before the appeals time even starts. So just a one-page document vetted by council to really reiterate the fact that some of these things are at risk of being appealed. And I'm pretty sure that all the attorneys for the applications or applicants are informing them of that, but I just, I would feel comfortable that there's an added document in there. And I would feel the same way with our, our body, the city council, if we decide to move forward with 100% of the process, and it gets to a public hearing and stuff, that we also really reiterate the fact that you could be done with a project and still not be starting the appeals process. So that's just, that's, that's my final input for, for that part of it.
All right. Can anybody answer this question? And it's just a follow-up to Melissa. Are there any documents that are being handed out with the building permit that state that this is at your own risk moving forward? Does anybody know if something like that is being put out there?
I, I've received through my employer, I have filed and received three building permits, and there is nothing extra coming in them than what was standard from before this. So I, from my personal experience, that answer is no.
Okay. Chip, do you know?
I, if I could add.
Steve, I can add. Okay, Joe, go ahead, Joe Perici, go ahead.
So it's, it's very unusual. The things, the permits you're pulling now are legal permits. In, in the past, up till now, nobody, barely anyone ever would begin building without waiting for a decision. First bill wouldn't issue a permit without a written decision, an appeal period, and a recording.
Right.
The registry of deeds. So normally, this wouldn't be an issue. What he's, what he's doing now is, if someone pulls a very simple permit, and they want to get started only because of the delay that's allowed by this law, is he offering to give them a permit and making it clear that they're taking, they're doing it at their own risk? I still doubt there'll be very many of them that would take that chance. But it's, I, we haven't seen, so far, we haven't finalized any, maybe one small, simple shed that may pull their permit and do it ahead of time, but nothing else.
And I do agree with you. The permits that I'm pulling are, it's very rare that they're at risk for an appeal anyway. So, I mean, I, I get that. But, thank you.
You're on mute. Father, do you want something to say?
No, you said the right thing. The permits are totally different than what, they're not going through any special counsel, per ZBA. It's the regular permit. You want your porch, whatever is legal, then there is no risk. And just like, like, and I'll give you the, this thing that Bill was discussing, is that, and you can go right through me so no one can get in trouble, is that, you know what, he, like, he would tell the ZBA, you know what, it's a 45-day process at risk. They let everyone know if they want to build. But the fact is, he says, that he's telling people to let it go, you know, let the ZBA, do your meetings, do what you need to do, because this way, you're already going through all the process. And this way, if they want to wait on the 46th day, they already have all their permits and ready to go, and they can build. Because everything's delayed right now. As you know, everything is delayed. So if ZBA says they're going through that, and they, and they have that 45 days, on the 46th day, they have that extra 45 days, but, and people know at risk, and he'll let them know at risk, but the fact is that then on that 46th day, they can actually move on. They've already been waiting this long. And so that's why we say, you know, it's up to the chairs. You have your, you know, you'll have Greg on the planning board, you have that. It's up to you to say, you know what, these are all these small cases, let's go. The big ones, like you said, you can, you know, in, 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 in all fairness, and the big ones, you know what, you can do, it's up to the chair of the, let's say, planning development. Who says you have to all do one site visit on one, one day? If you're going to have 40 people that really want to see a site, then take 10 at a time. If the lot's big enough. If it's not, then you cut it down. We've done site visits over the past. Bullport Hotel, it took us like 15 site visits, and we did them. So you, site visits can be done. Things can be done. You wear masks, you wear protocols, these things can be done. And like you said, Counselor Cox, if we're going to be sued, we're going to be sued. That's not the point that we want it. We want people to be able to build and have a voice. And, and so what it is, is up to the ward counselors, again, is to verify your ward, go to your ward meetings, go to rounds. You can, there's a way you can have ward meetings yourself, too. You don't have to, you can do Zoom on your own self and have ward meetings, you know. You can have conference calls, there's webinars, there's so many different things that we can say, I'm going to have these, and it's recorded. Then it's on the website. You keep sending it out so people can see it. You have, that's more publication than anything that I've known of. There's so many things that you really need to do. You can do it. We will help you. We will help you. Chip will be there. It's, you know, there's going to be some issues, it's going to be scary, and you know what, but it's going to be that way for the future, because we're going to have a lot of things that are going to be happening. And that's all I wanted to say, is that we need to work together, we can work together. There's going to be complaints, there's going to be things, but you know what, ward counselors really need to do their jobs. You can have Zoom hours, you can have webinars, you can even have group meets, chats, everything's recorded. You can do site visits, and you can do what you need to do. And my, and then my staff is there 100%. And then you can always say, well, Chip, what do I do? This is really controversy? What should I do? Then you guys discuss it, and then you say, you know, that one needs to be contained, let's see. But it could be one out of 100 that you might have. And you know what, right now, the way the economy is, you're not going to get 100. That's my opinion.
So just to touch on what the mayor said about Zoom meetings and webinars and stuff like that. So as I'm looking at our, our Zoom meeting at the moment, we have 16 panelists that we can all see, and we have 10 attendees. So we have 26 people on this workshop right now. I don't think we have 26 attendees ever at a council. It's just a workshop. I mean, we haven't met council and stuff like that. But I think at some point, you know, more people will be able to attend this than they will an actual site visit, or, you know, that's just my opinion. I'm not trying to, you know.
Especially when the site visit's held during the middle of the day. So, yeah.
Right. Well, these, these are some of the, these are some of the things that we're going to discuss tomorrow when we have our council vote. You know, if we do a site visit, do we want the chair of P and D, or do we want a member from P and D to be there to make it not so biased, like Barry was saying? You know, he'd be reluctant to have a site visit from just the applicant. You know, I mean, I get that, too. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah. Are there any other questions while we have Joe and Rick here?
Steve, if I may, through the chair, just to interject, a personal experience talking about appeals. I pulled a zoning board special permit to rebuild my house. I got that permit in February of 2019. The house was delivered in August of 2020. And the house was built, and eight months after the house was built, my neighbor appealed to the zoning board of appeals to have the building inspectors' decision that my house complied overturned. So this hang-up on appeals, you know, 20 days, 45 days, whatever, until you have a CO, and you can correct me, Mr. Perici, if I'm wrong, you know, there is an opportunity to appeal, right? So thankfully, mine was upheld. But again, it's personal experience, I don't mean to, you know, make things more complicated than they need to be, but if somebody has an ax to grind, it will get ground, whether it's.
Right.
You know.
Right.
Thanks, thanks for sharing that, Rick. Yeah. You know, like Melissa said earlier, we're going to get sued, we're going to get sued. Rick just said, somebody's going to appeal it. They're going to appeal it right up to the last minute, or whatever they, they feel like doing. So that being said, are there any more questions for Rick and Joe? All right. So if anybody has any questions for.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Rick.
Anybody has any questions for tomorrow? Please email them to Jill, or in copy, Joe, and Rick, and Rob, and Bill, and Greg, so that way they can all kind of compile their comments together and have come up with the best answer for us. So that being said, thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you made your job a little bit easier tomorrow night. So when you're at city council tomorrow night with us, I think it's going to go a lot smoother for you guys, because you guys showed up tonight. So, thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Before you leave, can I say a comment? I know, or it was earlier, people were wondering about notarizing. And where city halls close? Joanne, this, the governor waived, you don't need papers to notarize. The governor waived that. So any documentation that has to be notarized, does not have to be notarized, like, you know, for government subsidy, like the SNAP, or the Action Energy, or anything. I left that in to know, so I figured I'd let you know.
Okay.
So if anyone asks you to notarize, because everything's closed. So things are different. Things are changing. We got to go with the flow. Thanks, Joe and Rick. And Rick, next time, I'd rather have a FaceTime with a mask, and I want your wife's cookies, but that's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So the next item up on the agenda this evening is council rules of procedure and priorities and process during COVID-19. So everybody's familiar with our rules of procedure. Is there anything anybody would like to discuss moving forward while we're in this state of emergency, or we're under this pandemic, where, when our, you know, we talked last week at council, or the week before, about pulling items off the agenda to have the discussion before they go to a standing committee. I think we all agreed on maybe, maybe moving forward with that. But is there anything else anybody would like to discuss while we're on this topic? I know I have a, an item on tomorrow's agenda for this, too, and just to move the meeting up to 6 o'clock while we're all at, stay at home. So, you know, I'm not asking for any response or anything, because that's going to, for council vote tomorrow. But my, my, my reasoning is that we're not out, we're not having to come from out of town or whatnot. We're home, we can get on these meetings at 6 o'clock, and then we'll go back to our 7 o'clock start, once we resume back to the, the auditorium. So, but there's nothing else for the council rules of procedure? Seeing none. All right, moving right along. Our next item is council responsibilities during COVID-19. Is everybody, everybody's familiar with our priorities, that we're the legislative branch, you know, we, we set the laws, and then we have the administration that, you know, they, they go about what they have to do. So I've gone back with the mayor, and I've gone back and forth with Jim, and over the past week or a couple of weeks, and it's been requested that any, 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 anything that goes through the mayor's office should be in a, a form of a request. What we're getting is, we're getting a lot of emails from counselors on protocol, on what we should be doing, or whatnot we should be doing. So it was, I was asked to put this on the agenda this evening to make sure that we stand as counselors in the legislative branch, and we let the, you know, the mayor's office go about their business without trying to step on their toes so much. We, we're blessed that we have an open dialogue, that we can text department heads and city staff. But during this COVID-19, we want to make sure that, you know, these people working from home, and they're doing skeleton crews at city hall and at the annex, that we provide them with enough time that they're, be able to do their city work, and not be bombarded by what we have all the time. So let's just make sure that we, if anything we have, we go through the mayor's office requesting. So that being said, does anybody have any questions? Counselor Cox?
Um, is, is the mayor still on?
Yes.
Okay. I. Okay. Um, I received an email today regarding, um, a board that wanted to meet and they wanted, uh, the Gloucester Cultural Council, I believe is what it was. And they wanted to meet in regards to how they can proceed with moving forward with sharing information regarding, um, grants for artists. And they, for some reason, they sent me an email asking me about it and I said that all boards and commissions, um, that are non-essential have been asked to not meet until you give the green light. And there, there was just a lot of confusion over that because they still wanna get together to share information um, and talk about best practices for sharing that kind of stuff. So I asked them to reach out to you directly, the administration. Um, I know Jill is involved with a lot of those boards and commissions. Um, so like, you know, we, I am pushing those types of emails to you only because it, we don't have the authority to proceed. Like my response is you cannot have a meeting regardless, even if it is just to share information because technically you're still having a meeting. So they said they never received any notice and she did say that she was acting chair. So that might be the reason why.
So, so.
They doing.
What is it? So the question, I just wanna try to get a question. So Counselor Cox, your question is, how do we proceed telling boards and commissions how to function that are non-essential?
Yeah, I mean, my response.
First of all, every single board and commission, every single board and commission received an email notice that this is how it's going to be. Zoom is not, it's not that it cost us. It cost, and if everyone did that, we were already at a budget, even in myself. Um, we also, they, um, it's hard for public to add on to that also. And everything should go through Jill directly because the fact is she actually handles all those boards. Anytime there's grants or anything out, we're letting the public know. We work through Essex County, uh, foundation. You know, we're putting it out there, but Jill's letting people know. So any grant, anything that needs to be done, because we want grants, it goes right through Jill. I, any grant that I get, it goes right through Jill. And if there's a question about open meeting laws and all of that, we send it to Chip because some of them are meeting or talking and there's an open meeting law that they're not supposed to. They're doing it, they're intervening among each other or they might FaceTime. It's against the law to do that. And when we told some of them, you're not allowed to do that because that's not considered an, uh, an open meeting. So we said we have to do it through a webinar or the Zoom and we prefer that we don't start because if we do it for one, that's not essential, then we have to do it for all. But any concerns or any things they have, and, and you were right, uh, Counselor Cox, referring everything to Jill because she's on, that's her department. And, um, we're getting all the information out there. Every, any grant, anything that we send, we are, and we're working with, uh, all networking services. We have great networking services. So if it's something to do with seniors, we'll send it this way. Arts, we're sending it this way. So we are working together. We're getting it out there. And if someone's not, then just refer them to Jill because something's wrong.
And Counselor, just to follow up on the, what the mayor said, the memo went out to boards and commission chairs in early April. And that memo basically laid out this, um, non-essential board action and it also referred any questions to make. So I'm more than happy if a board member reaches out and says, we'd like to hold a meeting on this. You know, you can loop me in too, um, and I'm happy to have the conversation with them as well.
On those types of communications, it would be extra, not that I'm looking to get five hundred more emails a day, but stuff like that, that we can forward to someone that's maybe not communicating with the chair, which is the case in my email today. But copying us on parts of those procedures, help us support you in those decision-making. Um, I, it's just, it's, it was as simple as me saying, you know what, we got an email back in April, let me forward it to you. And then the conversation would have been finished. I.
Perfect, perfect. Absolutely, absolutely. You're right. Then you know what? When we get it, that we'll make sure, especially if we know you're the liaison or whoever may be the liaison on that kind of organization. Perfect. Thank you.
It, it's not like we're not, I'm not trying to interfere with your process, but it, it is a procedure and not.
No, that's perfect, Counselor. That's perfect. It'll help us actually. It'll help us a lot too. We'd like to have this liaison. I want this because we have to work together. Like I said, we're gonna slowly open. And when we do, we have to decide really which boards and commissions should be opened, what we need to do and not need to do. So we're gonna ask the chair to also ask some of the city councils to get more involved and, um, to actually, you know, to take over some of these little procedures and projects because it'll be kind of, you know, helpful and it'll be great.
All right. Thank you.
Has his hand up. I saw his fingers in his face.
All right. They weren't, they weren't in my nose. But anyway, um, I think we just need to step back, you know, a little bit. Um, in the sense that we all have relationships, uh, say whether John might, uh, have a closer relationship with the police department or, uh, whatever. Uh, maybe I've had a closer relationship with the, uh, veteran services or whatever it may be. But we have to realize that again, as the council, as counselors, we are, like you said, Steve, we're the legislative body. The administration is the executive branch. They're the ones that are doing this. So instead of when something comes to us, we just have to realize, again, that's why I think, uh, Counselor Cox asked for, um, you know, to get sharing the email information. So we'd be able to do that. But as long as we, you know, do the best we can to con, you know, contact a department head, you know, say community development Jill, which you know, the appropriate thing versus going, you know, around, uh, around in circles and, and doing things. So sometimes it might be a simple little thing that we do that, uh, um, in normal times, uh, we can continue doing. Say, uh, something for the DPW that is, doesn't require a specific request, that type of a thing. But, uh, in general, just realize that we have our, um, we have our responsibilities as the legislative body and, uh, the administration has theirs as the executive branch.
Correct. Right. And we're lucky that we have this executive branch because, um, I'm, I'm not trying to beat up the past administration that I was sitting on the council for, um, but you, you couldn't get in touch or get an answer from any department head without it going through the mayor's office. So we're lucky to have what we have now. Um, so, you know, let's, let's keep these lines of communication open. So we have this dialogue with our department heads. Um, but let's make sure we get through the mayor so we can access our department heads and, uh, we're just lucky. This last administration, I, we, we, you'd sit around for days waiting to get an answer. So we appreciate it. We appreciate, uh, mayor letting us have access to your staff too. Thank you. Um, is there anybody else that has a question on, um, duties of city council during this COVID nineteen? You know, from executive to legislative, legislative. Um, you know, and it's defined, it's defined in our, um, city charter too. So let's just make sure we let everybody on, on the, uh, mayor's staff function on what they have to do and focus on what they have to do. It, it's a, it's a new, it's all new to us. This is something that we've never experienced before. Um, while they're home or while they're in the office part-time or I don't wanna say part-time, but splitting between home and office, it's hard to get things done, especially, um, you know, there's nine of us. So if nine of us called Greg or Bill or, you know, Chip or Jim or Vanessa, nine of, all nine of us called them for fifteen minutes out of the day, every day. It's a lot of time, you know? So, um, let's make sure we get these as requests to the mayor. Um, is there anything else moving forward for this? All right, seeing none. Our next topic is.
Steve, hold on.
Yes.
Just real quick. One of the other things that would be helpful if we're going to get these emails um, is that when we get them to not reply all, just to say thank you for receiving them.
Right.
Um, I, I, that takes up, there's nine of us. If one person does it, um, it's another, you know, five or 10 minutes out of my day to go back and look at the, all the emails where it just says thank you. So.
Yeah.
They know we appreciate the information. We're asking for the information. Let's, uh, reply all should be used very minimally anyway. Um, and just to get out of the habit of doing that would be great.
Right. Like Vanessa sent us an update this evening of COVID.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, um, I try typically not to respond to those things because, um, not that I don't respond, but, you know, we all get it. So.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, even just a reply all to Vanessa or even a reply saying thank you to Vanessa is still extremely time-consuming for her. Um, she knows that we appreciate it. At least I hope she knows we appreciate it. It's just, it's hard.
Thank you. All right. So moving right along, we got our last item. Item number four is budget outlines during the COVID nineteen. Um, Melissa and I had a quick conversation the other day. She was updated by the administration and, um, I'd like for her to share some of her thoughts and how we're gonna provide our budget, um, seeing that we all can't be in the same room together during the budget process, which we normally are. Um, so Counselor Cox, uh, would you like to take the lead on this and give us an update on how we're moving forward with this?
Um, so it's gonna be pretty much like what we're doing, what we've normally done in the room format, but via Zoom. Um, the budget and finance committee has a job to do. Uh, we are going to always and foremost get our job done before we take any communications or questions from the audience. Um, and which has always been my format at even the room, um, budget meetings is we need to get our work done, um, and get through the budget because it is very thick and time-consuming. Um, anybody can join in on the Zoom meetings. Uh, at the end of each department, I do go around to, um, the budget and finance team and say, does anybody have any questions? Um, after the department head has put, um, good lord, um, given us their spiel, uh, the administration has supported the department head on it. They already, ba- basically the budget is what the budget is by that point. Um, but at that point, I will open it up. Everybody is always more than welcome to send me an email prior to the budget meeting for any department asking in-depth questions or whatever, and we will certainly communicate them during our, um, Q and A with the department heads. I've always been open to that. So you don't have to actively be on the Zoom call because that's gonna be time-consuming and quite frankly somewhat boring. Um, even though Scott finds it riveting to go over all those numbers. So, um, you know, and that's basically what my practice has always been of term budget and finance. Our work, then questions, then open it up to anybody that has questions. The public is still welcome to sit in on Zoom meetings. Um, I will get a better handle of how to pull down the participant button and see if there are any raised hands, um, throughout the, the meeting. I will put that as part of my procedure when we wrap with the department head, when we ask for questions to see if anybody does. But I really encourage everybody, once they get their books, to go through them and if they have any specific questions. And we always have the public hearing. Um, you know, a, a lot of the pushback that I'm getting regarding the special city council stuff is that we're gonna move forward with our budget meeting. The schools are moving forward with their budget meetings. We have loan authorizations for millions of dollars, um, that we should be able to handle the special city council permits uh, to the point of the public hearing as well. And I can't say that I disagree. So, you know, we're gonna move forward.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. Um, Val, Val, Val had her hand up and then Jen's got a question after or, so Val, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a question for Counselor Cox, just a, a detail. We've always, uh, the last four years been posting all of our B and F budget meetings as council as a whole to give particularly ward counselors and whoever else the opportunity to, at the end of the conversation, to ask our questions and not to be in violation of deliberations or, you know, actually making a statement. Um, is that something that you still plan on doing in spite of the COVID nineteen, um, emergency order right now? Um, so just my question to Counselor Cox.
Ever since that has been part of our procedure, it has been part of our procedure for budget and finance, for budget meetings. So as I said before, nothing is gonna change in our process. The committee has work they need to get done. We're gonna get that work done and then we're gonna open it up to questions. So that includes doing the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Jen?
Uh, so I, I just wanna say thank you. Um, I heard you say Counselor Cox, we are getting the books again and I really do appreciate that. Um, I know it's a huge effort, Joanne, uh, and, uh, it's just, it's a lot easier to look at that budget, um, on paper. So, thanks.
So, um, John is gonna start printing the books next week. So I guess after the fifth, when we have the special meeting, we'll probably have to do curbside service where you call your outside and we'll run the book out to you.
Okay.
I'm also very happy to deliver. I know where everybody lives. Once it's ready, I'm happy to deliver those. So you don't have to be inundated with that.
Yeah, I was gonna offer the same thing. So maybe if Melissa doesn't wanna take the bulk load, maybe I can take a few and Melissa can take a few and we can had, had our separate ways and make sure everybody gets them in hand. So, um, we'll definitely make sure everybody gets them.
Yeah.
Barry, do you have something to say? I don't know if you're playing with.
I was just, all I was gonna say is, uh, I'll have the, I, I'd ask that the mayor, uh, deliver mine with some, you know, with some foodstuffs. Save two trips.
Okay, you got it.
There you go. All right.
I think that was a polite, thank you.
I'll bring, uh, I'll bring yours, but if I stop, if she gives me food, I think it's not making it to your house, just so you know. Um, all right. Is there anything else anybody would like to talk about while we're on here? Um, okay. So we got a, we got a good agenda tomorrow. So I'm glad we had this conversation. This evening, I'm gonna try to, I know this was kind of, um, a last-minute workshop. Um, we put it together Wednesday evening, posted it Thursday. Um, well, if, I don't know how long this is going to last. Um, this, this hopefully isn't the new norm forever and we can get back to doing normal things. But as of right now, this is what we're, what we're dealt. So we have to make the best of what we have. Um, so tomorrow's meeting is a seven o'clock start, just so everybody knows. Um, and then we'll vote on a meeting tomorrow for moving forward. So just be prepared to be there at seven o'clock. And, uh, we'll go business as usual. Um, I'm glad we got Joe and Rick on here tonight. So we can talk about business as you, having them go business as usual, um, because I know they've, um, they were waiting on to see what we do. So, um, as a city council tomorrow, we have to remember that we are, um, elected by our wards or by the, the entire community, depending on what you're running for. And they expect us to, um, whether they give us input or whether they don't give us input, they're expecting us to vote for the right thing for everybody. Um, you know, this, that's the, the, um, the thing that we get while we're, we're elected. So, um, you know, use that wisely on all our votes, not just tomorrow, but moving forward. Um, that being said, is there anything else anybody would like to discuss before we head out? All right. Do I have a motion? Oh, John?
Steve, just one thing. I mean, looking forward, I mean, I, I, you know, nobody knows how we're gonna go back into having live meetings, but maybe, um, IT could do a little bit of, of planning. I, I, I can't imagine that we are gonna be able to, any of these big hearings have at Kairos. I don't think there's room to have separation. Maybe look into like the high school gym or, I, I'm just thinking that even when we get back to live meetings, we're gonna have social separation. There's gonna be a lot of logistics to that. So not, not asking for answers, just asking for everybody to start thinking about it.
Yeah, we need to, we need to plan for the future. So, uh, yeah, there's probably not a straight answer this evening, but, um, Sepatia's on, Chip's on, um, I'm sure it'll get back to Jim and, and whoever else is listening that these are some of the things that we need to plan forward. Um, not only for city council, but ZBA meetings, um, planning board, uh, CONCON, everything else where sometimes there's a jam-packed house that we need to start planning for how we're gonna social distance when we get back to nor, the normal, whatever that's gonna be. So, um, okay, there's not. um, okay. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move second. All right, we're adjourned.